I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting order on July 6, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium and the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. I will do roll. Fisher here, Crew, Marzullo, Manley, Ingleman, Spellman. Mr. Cetto has an excused absence. Trustee Augustine and trustee Ashrell are in the audience. So is Inspector Wilson. Trustee Swedick is attending virtually. I'd like, the first order of business is the review and approval of the regular zoning commission meeting minutes from June 1st, 2023. Has everyone had the opportunity to review those? And is there any questions or suggested edits? There's no suggested edits on it.
I need to accept them.
Moved by Crew. Second, my Manley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Min's been approved as written. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to skip the old business for now and start the new business for the night. The first order of business being a preliminary site plan review for Watermark III LLC, which is also known as the Town Center Project. Our preliminary site plan review is governed by chapter 11 of our book. So that's what we will predominantly focus on throughout tonight's meeting. If there's a representative from the company that would like to speak first, that would be great.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nate Scott. I'm with AODK Architecture in Lakeview, Ohio. We are here representing the owner. What we refer to on preliminary plant documents as the Hinkley Town Center Project. That was being known as a blue stone. So we're here to see preliminary approval and open to any feedback you're able to give us.
I don't.
Thank you. Inspector Wilson, do you have any preliminary comments before we start?
I do.
So I generally think that it's a good idea for us to have some collaborations. We've worked through this. So while we're predominantly focused on what's governed by the preliminary site plan, I always think it's a good idea just to have an open discussion. Make sure that, 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 you know, we, we've had an opportunity to, to identify potential issues so that hopefully any potential issues can be addressed before the final site plan. So with that said, I thought that it might be beneficial for us just to go through some of the zoning regulations that are most pertinent to this topic. And so if we start with chapter six, which chapter six, this is in the B3 district, which is Town Center. And it begins on page, chapter six, business districts begin on page 65 of our resolution. The first notation is the use regulations and whether these uses are permitted or conditional uses. Inspector Wilson, did you have any comments on that before?
No, I think everything that was listed is permitted.
Okay. And there.
Let me qualify that. We don't have anything in our zoning resolution concerning an amphitheater. So that, that's the only building that I saw that wasn't specifically listed in there.
And I would assume that if there's not been a concern yet, you're treating the amphitheater as kind of an accessory to the winery steakhouse. So in other words, this is an outdoor portion of the winery steak, steakhouse and not a separate use within the thing. The other notation is that you do have marked recreation and fitness trails. Those are also, if you interpret that as an outdoor recreation, it's not permitted. But we do allow pedestrian circulation. And in fact, we encourage pedestrian circulation within the B3 district and all of our business districts. So I would assume that that would be how we're treating those pathways. Perfect. Anything else from the zoning commission on the use regulations?
So my question will be, considering the amphitheater was kind of a large structure itself, would that perhaps not be considered outdoor recreation? After all, it's an open area for enjoyment, relaxation and things like that.
What's the size of the stage? Do you have any idea?
You know, we don't have a.
Is it just that microphone that's not working? Why don't you take this one then?
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. So at, at this point, as far as the graphic, the illustrative plan that was submitted, you know, the amphitheater has not been designed. And so really it's a placeholder for what we, you know, basically are making an educated guess about what's the right size for a use like that. It could be just an uncovered stage where things could happen. Things could be brought in, set up. It could be a covered stage. I think in the plan, it's shown 25 by 50, something like that, you know, but we're open to whatever size would be allowable. You know, it's not a use that's required as part of this development. It's just the owner wanted to provide this use, the rec trails, you know, the opportunity to circulate through the wooded areas as a resource for the community because this is in the historic center district.
Well, my, my question and concern is we spent a great deal of time discussing outdoor recreation and the noise that could be created by permitting outdoor recreation. So specifically excluded from Town Center. And if it's, you know, whether it's music or whether it's race cars or whatever games, it's still noise and it's outdoors and outdoor recreation is for, to, for recreation.
And so. So I think that that's where we, we also have to discuss, can a bar have an outdoor seating area? Can hoppy dudes have an outdoor seating area? Are they allowed to? Are they allowed to play music outside if they have an outdoor seating? Is that a separate recreational use if a bar or hoppy dudes has a outdoor recreation, outdoor music slash outdoor space? Or is it part of the use as a bar?
Well, I think fundamental difference there would be that an outdoor seating area is directly adjacent and connected. Whereas this is, this isn't.
It, it, it's not physically connected, but it is certainly within the same lot. And it's certainly within.
Well, all of it's within the same lot. Looking at multiple different uses on that same lot.
And that's why I was asking inspector whether, whether they're counting that as a primary use or an accessory use.
I don't, personally don't see where we could say that that would be an additional seating area for the steakhouse or anything. Unless of course, you know, there's service being brought out to there on a regular basis. If that's the case, then, then you can maybe make the case for it. But I think being as far away from the, the restaurant as it appears to be on the, on the graphic, it'd be a stretch to say that it is, it's incidental to that.
So I think that would be consideration, obviously for his own inspector Wilson. It's not the primary site plan requirements, but just something for you to consider. Anything else on the uses before we come forth?
Well, I mean, the, no, I think that is something on the preliminary site plan because it's whether or not it's a permitted use.
I don't think.
In chapter 11.
Chapter 11 today. Yeah, the preliminary site plan submission forms don't talk about whether it's a permitted use or not.
What was this actual dimensions you, that may be proposed, not imposed, but thinking 10 by 15, did you say?
I actually said 25 by 50. That would be the, the whole area, you know? I mean, that, that would probably be include stage speaker system. If you had to bring that in. Well, the seating area would probably be a bit, a bit larger than that. But again, this isn't, it's not designed. This is an idea.
Yeah, this is all preliminary.
Yeah. Yeah. And so I think too, you know, the, from a, from a physical standpoint, in terms of how it impacts the site, we don't believe there's any issues related to the code. If it's a noise concern, you know, that can be something that either this could be allowed to be installed and then that is controlled through, you know, programming or other measures or you all as, you know, as a board decide that, you know, wanted us part of the project, you know, we're happy to, to do whatever.
I'm in agreement with Cindy. When I looked at it, I also thought it was an amphitheater and it's not prohibited. I do remember the conversations we had with the outdoor recreation because I believe one of the concepts we used was a bar with a volleyball thing or something to that effect. And so we talked about that. And so, yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure I agree that it's an accessory use just because it's set off away from it. It is not like connected. So that, that's where I'm standing. But I like the concept.
We do too.
I thought it was nice, but.
Yeah.
So outdoor recreation would be watching a concert.
I would think so.
Or listen, or listening to.
What about a movie night at Bronkers Park?
For one time or regularly? Like an exception of.
We could have a special town. That'd be a special township if they want.
I'm asking if that generally would be outdoor recreation.
Yes, it is outdoor recreation. I would think so. You're happy. It's like a drive-in. You're going to have noise and people and.
It's not a fixed structure. This is a fixed structure. I'm, you know, I'm just trying to draw some.
There is a pavilion there. It's pretty fixed.
Well.
And of course, there's a cabin, which isn't used by the public as a rule, but that has never been used by the public, to my best of my knowledge.
It's not even in B3 district. I was just asking generally because we've had those sorts of activities.
I think too, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but you know, I wouldn't picture this to be a rock concert where you've got a thousand people coming to it. This is Friday night, you know, some sort of community gathering, a small local band might play, or you might have, you know, symphony come out, small symphony come out, quartet plays, something like that. That's the kind of scale that we're talking about here.
Mr. Sherman, what's the, in our book, what is the definition of recreation, outdoor recreation?
We've struggled with that. There is no definition of outdoor recreation. And that's where it was brought up with the martial arts.
Yeah.
Is there's really no definition of what is outdoor recreations for your interpretation?
Thank you.
So we, any other things on this table before we. So the next thing is 6B4 lot areas and requirements. The only requirement within the lot areas, buildings and parkings take up 80, no more than 80% of the plot. By my calculations, I think you're at 66.3% of the plot. So you're leaving a lot of ample green space relative to what's permitted. The only asterisk there, and I guess that it's not a building or parking anyway, but I don't see your septic sign on here.
That's correct.
And so I think that that will have a big impact on both this layout and the green space that we're seeing. And so is that still something that's in the works?
Yes, that's currently under development now.
As I said, I don't think that that would be part of your building and parking anyway, but it's, even if it is, it would, it would still be under the capacity. It's just not shown on our map currently. Uh, building setback requirements, the minimum setback from the street right away for B3 is 30 feet and the minimum side yard and rear yard, they do not abut any residential districts. And so therefore they have to be 10 feet away from the side and rear lot. It appears to me that you meet that. It's very difficult to tell for sure that buildings A and E are in fact 30 feet away from the street right away. The street right away, I can show on the map for people who are in the audience. It's going to be tough to see because these trawlings, I don't think are going to show well. So Ridge Road is running left to right on the page. Buildings A and E are the two buildings that are most proximate to Ridge Road. The dark black line that runs parallel to Ridge Road, I think, is your road right away. If I'm looking at the engineering site correctly.
It's correct.
And so the question would be Ian, Ian A, are they both 30 feet away from the road right away?
Building E may be shown slightly encroaching on that, but we'll make sure that we revise that.
Revise or obtain a variance would be.
Okay.
Required. Anything else on the building size or setback requirements? Off-street parking requirements of the, the, the minimum setback from the side and rear lines is, is five feet and there is no parking permitted in the front yard. And so with that said, the only concern that I saw is building E in the parking lot adjacent to building E. The spots aren't marked, so I can't tell where the spots officially start, but they at least have to be parallel to.
Yep.
Front face.
One, one question, if I could, is that a code issue for which you could obtain a variance? And my only reasoning for asking that question is because of how the site lays out. You know, we want to, obviously the business uses are not a hundred percent locked down yet because the owner doesn't have, you know, the floor plans and tenant leases sign and all that kind of stuff. But to make building E viable, trying to get as much parking close to that as possible to make those, you know, viable uses. It's only, you know, I think four spaces or something like that, six spaces maybe that we gain by pushing the parking a bit closer to the street. But I guess I just ask for my future information, you know?
Permit it to attempt to obtain a, anything in our code.
Got it.
And we can't give guidance as to the chances of success. You don't know the chances.
I would, I would recommend that you get what's called the Duncan factor, eight or nine questions. If you can get that from somebody, it'll give you some idea of the resolve of another court case. And most BZAs around our county use it as a guideline.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Called the Duncan factor.
Factors.
The height of the buildings cannot exceed 35 feet. I assume that your buildings all are under 35 foot threshold. Landscaping will be dealt with in much more detail in our final site plan. The one thing that I would ask that you do review is we have pretty stringent requirements for the shade trees and the number of plants. So you need to make sure that your front accommodates that.
Okay.
An appropriate layout. The other thing is with screening and landscaping, parking requirements for interior parking. For parking areas that contain more than two rows of parkings and is designed to accommodate 30 or more vehicles, not less than 10% of the parking lot shall be planted as landscaped islands. You do show some landscaped islands. It's, I can't tell from this preliminary site plan, the calculation to confirm that it is 10% of the area. But that's, that is one of the things that will have to be further reviewed.
Okay, understood.
Other than that, I have nothing else on the landscape section. Or the parking setbacks. So is there any other questions or concerns regarding this?
I just wanted to point out, I know you've, you've already somewhat addressed it. You've got the total parking spaces required is 311 and 290 shown, just something to be cognizant of. Obviously you are, just want to point it out that.
And we'll talk about that more in detail in chapter nine.
Yep.
Which is where we get to parking requirements. That will be the next jump after chapter six. Outside of it, so if we move on to 6B9, which is building and design guidelines. We do require sidewalks to be a minimum of 5 feet wide. I would assume that that will be consistent with what you've drawn.
Yes.
We also do encourage materials other than concrete. So stone, brick and other elements are recommended. So just as a consideration for you. Outside of that, the only other item that I had on this was some of the buildings I can see the front of, so I can tell what, how the percentage, they're almost all glass.
Yeah.
There are some buildings that I can't see the front facade of. And so for the design of buildings, we do have certain requirements regarding the number of, pack, number of windows and the, the, the height and.
Right.
Those. And so just wanted to point that out to you as a consideration for as we move forward on the design, we'll need to see more detail on those.
Yep, understood.
Gracious. I think that that was all I have for chapter six. Anyone else on chapter six?
Yeah. Sorry. So I really, I, I think this is an awesome project and I commend wanting to take this project on. I am just concerned about the architectural style. So we don't have requirements here for architectural style, but we do have some language so that we maintain the historic nature of Town Center. This is, it's even labeled a historic Town Center, right? But when I look at your drawings, and I may not be using the proper terminology, I don't do architecture, but they look more modern rather than the Western Reserve kind of style that the, this building is, or you know, the other ones that trying to maintain that. Thoughts and considerations on perhaps adapting a different architectural style?
I think that's really going to be, you know, speaking on behalf of the owner as, you know, working for, for them. That's going to be ultimately be their decision and we're going to do everything that we can to respect the intent of the code. When we gave our presentation to the trustees back in April, April 4th was the date of that meeting where this idea was first, you know, made public. One of the things we talked about was the importance of respecting the character and the sense of place here in Hinkley, but then more broadly where it falls within rural Ohio. And we talked about the idea of taking vernacular architecture, which would really be agrarian architecture, barns, you know, those sorts of forms. But, you know, because we're living in a, the 21st century, you know, taking a more contemporary approach when actually applying those styles. So speaking specifically, whether the architecture is going to change to, you know, match the Western Reserve, as you mentioned, I can't speak to that at this moment, that, you know, it's going to be a decision that we'll have to talk about and, you know, decide for the next round.
To add my two cents, looking at the, the restaurant bar, like I understand the glass and people are dining, they want to see the beautiful views out there. As far as some of the other ones being right up on the road, if it's all window and people are just looking into whatever's in there, whatever it might be. So in some of the, some of them I totally get it and others, it's just kind of like them. Maybe, maybe, but again, that's, that is up to, it's, it's your team's prerogative.
So I would echo Michelle's concerns. And I concur partly with what Matt, you say in terms of the building, the steakhouse that's set back deep, that is cool. You know, that's that open look. But I think one of the things that, for whatever terminology, as minimal as it may be in our zoning regulation and our comprehensive plan, it's to try and maintain the historical look. So things close to the street, just having that appearance, that George, that Western Reserve version of the Georgian style is really what it is. And at least, so you know, when you're, you're going down the street, there's some uniformity. It's got that charming small town look about it. You know, how things then get designed towards the back of the building and inside, that's, you know, contemporary, however you envision it. But if at least appearance wise, when somebody just drives down the street, you know, across the street, you've got homes and structures that were built 1800s, early 1900s, and it just exudes a, you know, is quaint feel. And, and it's like, it's, it's a wonderful design and everything, but it's like out of place, you know? If there's something that you could do, just that front look so that it's just more uniformed, consider, I mean, that would be, I think, just historically appealing. We call it historic Town Center. And, you know, yet we're kind of losing the historic nature and Hinkley born in the 1820s. So.
Yeah.
It's close to the center.
Okay. Understood.
Anything else on chapter six? Otherwise we'll move on to chapter nine. So I think chapter nine, which is parking and loading regulations, the next pertinent section for us to at least have some discussion on at this point. And, and the first thing that I arrived at is you did list, and I'll pull it up on here for everyone else to see, the required parking and the actual parking. And you've indicated that you'll need shared parking. I, I'm not sure how you arrived with those calculations. It's a little tough for me from, because we're only seeing the square footage. Right now, what I'm seeing is on Farmer's Co-op, you have one spot for every 100 square feet. If we look at that as a, for instance, a retail business, it's one space for each 250 square feet net floor, which is the portion open to the public. If we look at it as a shopping center, it's five spaces for each 1,000 square feet gross floor, which is the total building size. In both cases, you seem to significantly have more parking than what's required for the Farmer's Co-op.
That's correct. And maybe on the plan where we had, you know, parking required, maybe required was the wrong terminology there. But the idea is that, you know, we envisioned this as a Farmer's Co-op. That was in response to, you know, the information that came back from the community, you know? You know, the information that came back from the community, you know, that that's public stuff out there like Facebook, for instance, some of the information that we saw. As well as talking with, you know, other representatives from the community. And the idea there is that what if as part of that Farmer's Co-op, there's an opportunity to get food? Then all of a sudden, potentially, the demand for parking goes up if you have, you know, sixty people there and everybody drives themselves. What we wanted to do was, you know, take the prescriptions that were in the code, also take our professional experience, you know, just like what's possible with some of these uses. And make sure that we weren't under designing the parking because that always becomes an issue, you know, and so I guess we just aired on, you know. On the heavy side.
A very good thing to do. What I would suggest is for a final site plan review, that this show the required has conforms to our code. And if you overbuild it, that's fine. You have plenty of space to overbuild it. You can internally know that you're overbuilding it. We just need to make sure that you're at least. Achieving this. Otherwise, we have to consider the shared parking option, which is still another option on the table, but I don't even know if you're going to need to get to the shared part.
That's correct.
Because when I'm calculating this, I'm thinking that you have over the required number without going into shared parking. Just so that we can do the rest of the rundown, butcher shop and deli shop, you have one per eighty two square feet. Again, I'm not sure what we would treat that as if you treat that as a restaurant or retail business or shopping center, but. I think that no matter which one you look at it, it's probably going to be over again. Services offices, you had one per two hundred and forty seven square feet. Which, again, I think that one was, I think, the closest one to what I saw, but it was still what I thought was over in terms of parking.
Okay.
The winery and steakhouse was one per seventy six square feet because of it's a restaurant and you need to know how many chairs will be in there. We can't exactly calculate it, but it did seem like. You might be assigning extra parking to that. And the retail and service is the same way, one per every two hundred and four square feet. Again, it seemed like you potentially had additional parking there. So your plan notes that you need three hundred eleven parking spots. You have two hundred and ninety parking spots.
Right.
You might actually need.
Probably.
Ninety or fewer.
Yeah, sure.
But you might need some shared parking, and if you do need shared parking, that is allowed for nine point five under the consideration that in a mixed use project or single use project for which. The different components of the use have varying peak demands, the uses can be adequately accommodated with a lesser number of parking spaces. Than that, which is required based upon some of them computed individually. So we do have that available to us. But as I said, I'm not sure that you need shared parking as it's applied within our code.
Right.
And I think again, just to reiterate, that was just our effort of kind of getting ahead of, you know, what could potentially happen depending on who the what the final design works out to be.
Anything else on that parking portion? My my next comments regard relate to loading requirements and access drives. Anything else before chapter section nine point ten from anyone? All right, then, just a quick question on loading. Do you have any loading areas within this site? Do you plan on there being loading areas?
We plan on there being loading areas, but they have not been resolved as part of this preliminary plan.
And what about dumpster locations?
Unknown as of now, but there will surely be dumpsters.
And the only other topic related to this, and it's not related to parking, but I thought it corresponded. Is, you know, there's been some discussion of water, and if so, I'd assume we will install fire hydrants of some sort. And those are also not shown potentially because you don't know whether you're doing water or not. So that's another question mark is where are those going to be? Because we can't see.
Sure.
That there there's no delineation for where those places would be blocked off from parking. Inspector Wilson, did you hear back from safety forces, particularly police and fire on some of these? I'm concerned when we and we've had some brief discussions about it, but I think we were still waiting on safety forces. Let me.
Let me share your mic. Trustee Sweattick can't hear us one from the table, and he asked us to come forward if we're going to speak. I both as the safety forces, the police and the fire department see no problems. And I've asked him to send me that in an email or a letter so I can give it to you, but I haven't received it yet. But. So far, we we've had no pushback from either safety force.
Okay, because my big concerns are when we look at the. It's easy for me to stand up. This angle doesn't look too bad. This angle right here, which is a straight ninety, looks difficult for our trucks. And so we will need to see radiuses on that, and our trucks have to make sure that they can get through that access point. I'm also concerned about. This appears, I think, to be probably a twenty four foot. Driveway, is that correct?
Oh, that's correct.
So in the event of a some sort of fire or mass casualty event, anything like that, we have one access path to get back there. That's something just to consider whether it can be a. I don't know. I again, I hate to put pavement where there doesn't need to be pavement. I don't know if it's showing, maybe it's showing the same way on there. But I do wonder when we see the school, for instance, right now, that school part, that school driveway, which is also very narrow, goes back and then opens up. At peak times, it becomes very crowded in that space. And if there's an event at that point, it would be very difficult for our safety forces to very quickly move through there. I'm worried about that same funneling that would happen here. And so it's potentially opening up to three lanes, potentially two lanes with a walking path that the fire then could get through or police. It's I I don't, you know, it's consideration of whether you can add an access drive somewhere else on here, get an easement from someone for an access drive. Something to give us access to that back building and back parking lot more efficiently. I think that that's something that would. That you should consider, and that I think that our fire and police should consider more, but particularly that turning radius. We can provide you with our engines required radiuses. And then if you correct Inspector Wilson, I know that we had that from.
Yeah.
Senior housing. So we can provide you with that required radius of turning, and then you can actually plot it and verify that the trucks.
Okay. Great.
And if not, it looks like it'd be a pretty easy configuration. Anything else on that before I jump to the preliminary site plan? There's nothing else. We'll move to section eleven point four, which is the preliminary site plan submission requirements. And I think we also have a checklist that mirrors this, so I'm going to pull a checklist as we go through it and then. Anything else you want to raise the questions? So the preliminary site plan submission requirements require the applicant to provide the following things, a property location. Now, I think that they've satisfied that. The location of existing buildings within the development and access points. I know the building we're building is. Building is going to be built has already been removed. Is do you know yet is building C going to be converted? You use the existing building to convert it, or is it going is the existing building going to be removed?
My understanding from the owner as of now is that the existing building is going to be removed, but I don't know that that's a final decision.
Okay, but it's in the approximate location of E and C, so.
That's correct.
The general location of existing buildings, parking and access drives on parcels within one hundred feet of the site that's shown in the arrow that we see here. A topographic, a topographic survey of the proposed development area with contour lines at two foot intervals. We do see this. I do want to note, although it looks like it's okay to me, you have some. Rapparent setbacks to deal with on the parcel. Does that show up? You do have some rapparent setbacks on the parcel. However, those look to be. Going behind the parking and then behind between the amphitheater and the winery is where that apparent setback is. So I don't see any buildings that are within the build within that.
Yeah, that's our understanding as well.
Perfect. Existing major vegetation features wood areas and large isolated trees, one foot or more in diameter. We can see those on the existing map. Locations of wetlands is depicted on delineation produced by a professional wetland specialist licensed by the state of Ohio. The floodplain boundary and floodplain elevation is delineated by federal emergency. Management agencies, river streams, and their related river or stream bank ponds and water courses. We do have a copy of that that actually showed that there are some there are some wetlands on this property. The GIS does not show those as being there, but I would assume. Yeah. Yeah, there.
I think it's the second page.
Video. That's been satisfying. I don't know how I do this. Got a double view. That's not really funny. Yeah, it's on page A one zero two. Do you know yet are the wetlands going to require any sort of EPA review or?
I don't believe so. That's my understanding.
I I think that that would be probably accurate, right, Inspector? Because those would be local wetlands.
Yeah, they're isolated.
Thank you. Delineation of existing drainage drainage patterns on the property that's also shown on that same map. Existing wells and well sites, there are no wells. By understanding, there is a cell phone tower on the parcel, and that cell phone tower is shown in the top. Right corner of the maps. The general location of development areas identified by use, including any feasible lots and restricted open space areas in part of the proposed project. They've satisfied that requirement. The general layout of proposed circulation systems for vehicles and pedestrians, other proposed public walkways, access points, and the parking and service system. I do think that they have that, although I am concerned that it's going to change significantly. So it's something to consider. A summary table showing total acres of the proposed development, the number of acres devoted to each type of use, including streets and open space and the number of dwelling units per type. They do have that on.
Yeah.
Yes, three. Proposed phases of the project is to be developed in stages, indicating the phases during which common facilities are anticipated to be construction. This is a single face project.
Yes.
Conservation development for the next item, it doesn't apply. Other reasonable information is the zoning commission may require in order to evaluate the general concept of the proposed development. In the case of subdivision review, the zoning commission reviews for zoning compliance only subdivision approval, disapproval. Or or approval with modifications is determined by the Medina County Planning Commission. Have you spoken with Medina Planning Commission yet?
No, we have not.
Inspector Wilson, you've had brief conversations with Miss Testa, correct?
They asked us to forward from our meeting tonight. Planning and and so we'll do that once you know.
And do you know if they'll be reviewing this and sending it through the planning commission or?
I don't believe they will.
Okay.
But.
And what about ODOT? Because this, so this is connecting to Ridge Road, and the amount of traffic volume is ODOT somehow notified either through you or through.
Yeah, any any ingress and egress will have to go through ODOT, of course.
If I might just interject this morning, Denise Testa at county commissioners meeting indicated that. This was submitted for concept plan review with the planning department and is scheduled for July nineteenth. From their agenda of this month.
Okay, that would be news to me. They have sent us one plan, which I don't think has been forwarded because Suzanne Perlin just returned. But that's up discussed at the end, and that's Country Brook. So if they just submitted, you just submitted a concept plan?
So she mentioned it this morning, and I looked on their agenda for July nineteenth, and. There's something here from Hinckley.
There is the there is one from Hinckley that's Country Brook. That that is certainly from Hinckley. And that one we've received, and they have we have to return comments by the twelfth. This one, I've not seen any emails, so unless they just submit it, but I think the deadline would have passed.
Maybe she confused it, but. The way she described it this morning, she's a very exciting project, so.
I'm happy to check in with them and see what's going on.
This project would have to go through this board, and then the minutes would have to be sent to the planning commission, the county, before it would get on the agenda.
Agenda, that's. And they would also already have to submit. You submit an entire month in advance.
Right.
For planning services, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask a question, you submitted or concluded that there's no issue with wetlands. I don't know what history, you know, it was that, you know, there was a gas station there at one time. Have you checked to make sure the tanks are out?
All I can say is that we've had a survey conducted by a civil engineer, and nothing's come back on that yet.
Good. There was a tank at the at the old hardware store, too. I don't know if that was taken out or not.
But we'll be sure to do due diligence with that.
Well, there's some, as I understand, there's a source in Columbus where you can check quickly.
Okay.
What I understand from other developers.
So we just have three more items for the review. The development should be designed to preserve the natural amenities for the site. For example, building location and placement should be developed with consideration given to minimizing the removal of trees and the change of topography. I I will say that I'm very pleased to be able to conserve as much green space as you have. And also notably, the green space being kept as clusters, which is which is something that I think helps provide an opportunity for wildlife. So. You know, I understand that this is certainly bigger than the existing proposal or existing building layout that's there. But it's well within our code, and it does provide a large amount of green space relative to what there. The development will result in a harmonious grouping of buildings within the proposed development and in relation to existing and proposed uses on adjacent property. I I'm sorry, this just struck me, and I wanted to note that you do have a potential town green with a notation. My understanding is that that is where SNS currently resides. And you are not sure yet on the acquisition of that, and therefore that's why that's a proposed potential town center, town green spaces. Because it's going to be a function of whether they acquire that property or they can't acquire that property.
That's correct.
And the development will have properly designed open spaces that meet the objectives of the township's faster plan policy and zoning resolution. So I think before we take any vote, I would certainly like to hear the public, give them opportunity to speak if they wish to speak. Any any objections to that?
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spelman, any comments from you before?
This, what's the property to the east? Is that residential?
No, the the large property that's to the east, that that has another tower on it, and that's that is towed a property entirely of business. Zoned as well. We've looked into that.
Is is on what?
Business. Yeah, I can I can pull that up.
I mean, aside from that, I've had the plan was rather interesting and vicious myself. Think everybody latched on to the amphitheater. We think everybody latched on to the amphitheater, uh, you know, portion of it. It gets interesting. Uh, if you look at what you're trying to do within the town center, uh, driving, you know, more downstream, more traffic, business down there.
Just so you see, that parcel that you're referring to is this very long narrow parcel. I think it's about six acres here.
Okay.
And that entire parcel is business and their parcel ends right about here. So the, what was formerly the icon building is this L-shaped property here. And then they're surrounded on this side by the, the other parcel that's in the business.
Do we know the approximate width of that right side of that east edge?
Bigger than the box. Hang on, I can do a quick measure. My GIS.
Couple hundred feet. And then directly to these to that's residential.
Correct. Spot on, roughly two hundred feet.
You said safety forces is reviewed this.
Correct. Anyone from the public which is speak? Please come up, state your name and, and address for the record, please.
My name is Frank Shaker. We live at fifteen forty-three Center Road. If you could please pull it up, will you just head up there? That'd be awesome. And my only question is, uh, if anybody here would want an amphitheater two hundred feet from their house.
Which, which house?
We own, if you could pull that last one you just had up. The B three.
Hang on, this one's.
Thank you.
This is the B three though as well. Get that line off of there.
Are you in the parcel of the east?
I am.
So you're this, this parcel?
I'm sorry.
This is the E.
If you go to the, if you go to the east of the tree farm, which they were talking about the that's right, that butts up against the other property with the cell phone towers in the corner of the tree farm. There's another cell phone tower.
Right.
So I'm to the.
Tower here.
We're, we're right to the east.
Tower here. So is that your house?
That's our pond in our house right there. That is correct.
Okay.
So we're kind of, I don't know what to say about having an amphitheater, you know, two, three hundred feet from our house and having all the traffic.
Bought it. The, the amphitheater is here.
Okay.
The winery is here.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you knew where.
That's going to be right next to the cell phone tower.
That, yes, the winery, the, the, there's a parking lot right here and the winery is right here.
So you're going to have all those, you're going to have people parking way in the back by our, by the other property. At, at, at the end, at the end of the day, I have first refusal in a tree firm.
Yeah, I've been trying to acquire it for eighteen years now. Correct. I've talked to him numerous times. His brother lives off the tree. He, he lives off the revenue coming from the cell phone tower. That's why they won't sell it. I've already offered him to buy the property and he can keep the cell phone tower. I, I don't, I don't need the revenue.
I think Mr. Gaffey's interested in.
I know what he is.
Sitting down with you.
He's, he, he's texting me about that and he said he was gonna, I don't want mounds built there. I want the trees to stay there. I want trees. I, I want our, I, I, I want our privacy. That's what we bought on Hinckley for. Hinckley, the rural. I just want my privacy. Don't steal my privacy. Come on, that's, that's unfair.
But again.
We don't want people coming, you know, wandering off onto our property.
Let's have a conversation.
Okay.
Sir, just go back to the map. Here's the cell phone tower.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna.
That's fine. Do you see this?
I can, okay.
So here's the other parcel, their cell phone tower on the other parcel right by here.
It's a very corner, it's a very corner of our property. Our property butts up this.
Your property is over here somewhere. In your house, your house is right about here.
Okay.
Here's the first cell phone tower. That's on this right across from you on the other lot that they do not know.
Correct.
Here's the second cell.
Now, the first, the second cell phone tower is is closer to that one. It wouldn't be in that corner. It would be in the other corner. Because at the tree farm, if you go back by the tree farm.
Here's the ones.
In the northwest.
Here's the one cell tower.
Yes, and the other one's right.
Isn't the other one right there?
Correct. That's where the other one is.
Right.
It's not closer to our house.
Okay, so it's further out than your house.
Yeah, it's correct.
And then here's your house and then here's the other cell.
And our, our property goes to the back of that cell phone tower and goes.
Way up.
Yes, correct.
Correct. So that's there. This is the cell phone tower that's on their parcel.
Correct.
And so here's that cell phone tower. So your house, I guess, would be right here.
Okay.
Give or take. And then they have the driveway and there's the winery.
Okay.
And then the.
At the end of the day, we just want our privacy.
Sure. I just want to give you, give, give perspective as to where things were, not, not discount anything you're saying. Thank you.
I mean, besides that, what about the people that are becoming and wandering onto our property? You can't tell me is, is there going to be a fence there? Is there going to be something to stop them from coming over? And what about the water drainage, drainage, drainage from that, from both properties actually comes to our pond? That's what, that's what feeds our pond. So if they build it and take all that away, what's, where's the water going to go to? Is it going to still drain? Is it slope to our property? I just want to make sure nothing's going to change on our side. I mean, again, we bought on Hinckley for the privacy. We just want to keep our privacy. Unless he just wants to sell us, he can just, he can sell me the property that he bought. I'll, I'll give him the six hundred thousand. Or whatever.
Are, are you going to be required to capture water or you? I know in some instances you're required to capture all the water such as the surface water that runs on to the, from, from the pavement, you have to capture that. Uh, and then you're able to redump, dump it where it goes or where it's supposed to go anyway, the intended spot. It looks to me like most of the grain falls back towards that tower.
Actually, the tower is the high point on our site. So everything from the tower, do you want me to, do you want me to speak into the mic or?
Yeah. I'll pull up just so that I have it, the elevations. Oh, you, I see. You're, you're correct.
Yeah. So the, the cell phone tower in the northeast corner of the parcel is the high point on site. And so where you already pointed out that riparian corridor, that's where the stream is. So actually the, both sides of the property uh, drain to that stream.
Okay.
And so, um, uh, you know, we would be required to provide stormwater management. We understand that that's going to be part of, you know, the ongoing development of the design. Um, and we're prepared to do that.
So it would, it would seem that very little of the water from this parcel would run onto your property.
Right.
Because all of this.
Some of the.
Flow this way. You'll see some flow down this way, I would assume. And then all of this would flow into this.
That's correct.
Stream. And this stream, it looks like flows downward this way.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
And if you would just maybe even for my benefit is since you have the measuring capability, can you measure from the house to just where the center of that riparian zone is, where the stream is, just for reference?
Maybe. So that corner.
Just give. You can even go, you can even stay closer to the house. That's whatever. Yep, right there. What's that?
Five hundred eighty seven feet.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Frank, would you spell your last name?
Shaker, S H A K E R.
Thank you. That's all.
You're not going to state your name and for the record?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, you may have to state it just for transcription purposes.
Richard Pearl, he was just seeking the address of the previous speaker.
Mr. Chairman, of, of the uses on there, can you refresh my memory as to were they all permitted uses or is there any of those conditional?
So they all should be, I'll, I'll read off the uses that's listed on this. Farmers co-op, butcher shop deli, service and office, winery, steakhouse, retail and service. That retail and service, all of the buildings are well under the twelve thousand mark. So those would all be permitted uses. The only question mark is what is the amphitheater? Other than that, yes, those all at least from this appear to be permitted uses. They're either restaurants, office space or retail space. Thank you. So our options at this time are to approve the preliminary site plan. Approve it with some modification or reject the preliminary site plan. If there's any other information that we need, we can always request that the, that it be continued until the next meeting. Is, will there be any lighting throughout the, um, the parking lot and across the, the project?
Oh, I'll say that lighting is one of the many elements that are details that are still under development. But what we're going to do is, you know, ensure safety and security as part of the final design. And so anything that's required will certainly fulfill. But my sense is that the owner is going to probably go above and beyond to just make sure that this is a great place for the community.
Signage is also not shown. There are pretty stringent requirements on signage. So again, they don't, they're not required to be on the preliminary site plan. But just something for consideration as you work through it to make sure that that signage.
Understood.
So I think the, the only thing I'm here that we would necessarily, I mean, that, that we can't just say, yes, it's, it meets the zoning requirements. It would be the amphitheater. I think that's the one thing right now that we're looking at scratching our heads saying, all right, does, does this fit in the preliminary plan?
Well, I would agree with that, but I would still look at eleven point seven B. That's the harmonious scooping of buildings in the town center, at least street.
Yeah. I, I'm more concerned with the style. The, I, I can get over the amphitheater if there were conditions met, but the, it's in the historic town center. It just takes away, I mean, doesn't look like a historic site, but it's beautiful. Don't get me wrong. It's beautiful. I just don't feel it complements what we already have here. And I believe that's kind of the language that we have.
Can I pull this back up? Because I think that I want to make sure I'm understanding CERN and talk about the buildings that we're speaking on. So. You're, oh. So going back to this, there, the ridge road is again running left to right. So E first, excuse me, C is not very visible from the road. E is not, or, uh, the, the winery is not visible at all. B is pretty far set back. A is turned perpendicular to the road for the most part, except for the front face. And E is the one that's facing the road and most visible from the road. So if I'm hearing Ms. Crew correct, the concern would be on the front face of E. And the front face, the, the front face being the side facing ridge of A. And then I want to make sure that I'm showing the correct buildings here when I look at this. So this building, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's building A. So that would be the front face that you're seeing of A. And then the building E, the front face of it. That's the front face of building E, correct?
Correct.
And so is that stone? Is it a brownstone? Is it a white stone? Do you have the option still of what?
May I answer yes to all your questions?
I, I'm just wondering, because I actually, this building actually has the most consistent color scheme with what we're seeing downtown. It might not be, um, I, I think this facade is actually the most closely aligned with the facades that we see around here. The question would be, what does that facade look like in terms of color? And I think if it's a more on the white side, and at least if you're doing white stone or white, you know, some sort of white fascia, it's more here towards rectangular as opposed to square. It'll be getting much more close to the style that we see around here. That would be my interpretation, at least on this building. So I would.
That's not my interpretation.
This, this, there are some other buildings I see as very modern.
Excuse me, it doesn't like the roof line that I, and I don't know anything about architecture, but I wouldn't say that in my, my view.
So what can they do? That's where my question is.
What can they do?
To this building? Maintaining the shape or whatever they need to maintain. I'm asking you, what reason or reduction of the roof line? Is it the color of it? Is it the number of windows? What on this building would you like to see different?
I'm going to just jump in here and say, I would just say, make the style to be Western Reserve Georgian style. But you know, with whatever flair to kind of, so that the face of the building resembles the styles that are already in town.
So that would change the entire roof line.
Yeah.
Because there's no Georgian style with an A-frame type roof.
That's right.
So that's what I'm saying. The roof line doesn't even, how, how you can say it mirrors it, it doesn't.
And, and the columns in front of the building, the rectangular columns are, are modern. So.
Do you think that that slope is much different than that slope of the police? I'm not so sure it is.
Well, you know, these are drawings and it's hard to make a decision based on a drawing.
I don't know the name of it, but when the roof line comes down that low, that's not the same. It's a different style. And I forget the name. Is it a HIPA roof? I can't remember. Cable roof? Yeah, gable. Yeah. When it comes that low like that, it's, it's, that is not the same as the police station. This is a different. It doesn't, it it's a different type of roof line. I'm sorry. I don't know the names, but it's not to say that it isn't a very nice design and the concept plan is a very nice concept plan. And I think, you know, I it's not that. I just think we. I just think we, it's deemed historic town center. How can we have a historic town center? And our buildings not represent historic town center, which is taken from the Western Reserve Georgian style, whatever it is. Georgia, pre-survival or.
So I have a, I have a kind of a complimentary question. That courtyard, the SNS building, SNS heating right now, that building was built, does anybody know? Probably Nate.
Yeah, I know. No, no, it's nineteen.
Nineteen hundred?
Guessing now, but I could document it precisely. I think nineteen eleven, nineteen, someone in that area.
So.
The building that was on the other side of it, was the original post office, was the older one of the two.
Okay. So.
But that building is not Western Reserve.
No, 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 it is not.
But it's got.
It's, it's not anything.
Right.
The square structure.
It's, well, it's always like a four, almost like a four square. But, you know, it's, it's got that old style.
Colonial style.
Colonial style. There we go. It's the, right. Which was prevalent like in the nineteen hundreds, which, you know, and is being proposed to being torn down. So just the antithesis of historic town center and then removing a historic structure and replacing with green space. And if you do do that, if that does happen, then building A becomes more open and visible to Ridge as well. So just, um. Food for thought, you know, in terms of just trying to keep some, again, uniformity across Ridge Road line of.
And I, I keep, this is why I keep going back to, I think we should investigate architectural design standards. Because, you know, our, our, our charge is look at the surrounding buildings, look at the existing buildings. Well, what style is Foster's?
Well, you know, last June, a year ago, I suggested we at least make some general statement on architectural style when we were doing text amendments. And we didn't do that, you know, there was, there was a discussion, well, I mean, general, not specific, but a general architectural style, what period? And, but we then went on this conversation about Architectural Review Board. Or if we even did that, we wouldn't have had this information together for what's happening today. So whether that's something we should do going forward or not, I don't think is a discussion here today. I think the question is, what consensus are we talking about for this project?
I just see that's not a discussion today, because I think this is exactly why that should happen. But this was, that we know that these properties, several properties, I've listed them all, have been turned over, new new pans recently. And we know that there's development that will happen here within town center. It's bound to, when you see new properties turn over as much as they are in town center, that we're going to see some changes in town center. And yes, we would never have been able to cat, cat, catch this project, because it would have taken us a year to do it. Go through the process, we would have missed this one. But I still think that there are more properties that are in town center that we're going to see developments within the next five or 10 years. And the whole, the focus of the conversation today has been, we don't like the architectural style of this. But we don't have in our book.
Excuse me, we didn't say we didn't like it. We said it doesn't fit. In six F, uh, six B one F says. At the end, the use and design regulations of this district are intended to create and maintain the existing small town setting, characterized by buildings close to the road, rear parking, shallow setbacks and landscaping, while maintaining historic nature of the town center. I just think the look is not historic in, in nature. That is my opinion. I didn't say I didn't like it. I think it's beautiful. I just said it didn't fit with what we have here. Now, if we're gonna change the entire town center to look like that, okay. But that, we renamed it Historic Town Center for a reason. If we named it, we renamed it Historic Town Center, I think we owe it to maintain the historic nature. It's my two cents. Anybody else? I agree with you. Consistency is key and we, we do need consistency. But I just want, I mean, this is the project before us today. So in order to maintain consistency, we only have what we have and this is all we have.
It's the project that will shape, I think, what happens.
In the future, yes.
It, it, and so.
Yes.
I understand the concerns.
And, and I think Nate does too, because he said he did.
God, appreciate it, buddy.
No, I appreciate all these comments and I do, you know, just, not just for myself, but on behalf of the owner, you know, we have heard you here tonight about what you're hoping for in terms of architectural standards. I think for the purposes of, you know, this meeting though, and what we're hoping to do with the project is just, you know, bring to light that we've gone through your code and we feel pretty strongly that we've respected it and met. You know, each one of the points, even the point that you just mentioned. You know, there's some ambiguity in, you know, character of development. So architecture is part of that. But the things that are specifically listed there, the use and design regulations of this district are intended to create and maintain the existing small town setting. You know, with the scale of these buildings, you know, they're all following all the prescribed requirements of your code. Parkings in the rear, setbacks are shallow, landscaping is being maintained. You know, at the end of this subsection, six B nine, design of buildings, you know, appearance of being at least two stories in height. You feel like we accomplished that with the renderings that you've seen through the use of pitched roofs was one of the examples. All the building facades, you know, as the chairman already brought up. You know, they're following all the prescriptions here in, in part two B in terms of how much glazing is being shown. The scale of those, making sure that windows aren't higher than three feet above the ground. You know, we, we try to do our due diligence to go through each one of these items and respect, you know, what the code says. So having said all that, we will, you know, keep in mind, you know, what you're saying about architectural style. But we hope that that doesn't, you know, hold up this portion of the process as it relates to the preliminary plan.
Yes.
I already gave you your opportunity.
I know, and I'm taking advantage of you.
Richard Pearl King Road, if it would help, and Nate can disagree with me, but the police station I would call a hip roof with a gable dormer and a gable addition. And that would be the same for the building we're in here. Would you agree that those terms? And I have one other question that's off the subject.
An architect is going to just say, yeah, that's exactly what, that's pretty generic. Like saying to a lawyer, hey, take a look at this. Does it, do you agree with this? No, we're on his, hey, me.
Well, Michelle was struggling with the, with the roof on that drawing.
And that's why I was trying to look at that roof to give us some visual comparison, because I always, I can't visualize from rendering.
I mean, I'm not an architect, but I, I'm a chemist in an architect's body. And I have another question. Part of the site review, do you discuss signage or is that later?
Final segment, we'll discuss signage, we'll discuss landscaping, layout, those sorts of things will all come.
Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Spelman. Perhaps maybe a little unorthodox or unconventional, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that, that the facade is a holdup here. I think everybody in general is in agreement outside of what to do with the amphitheater. But, you know, perhaps, is there an opportunity to come back with a couple just mockups or drawings of, you know, something that you think from a facade perspective, you're like, hey, here's, you know, without investing thousands and thousands of dollars in it. But to come back and say, these are some alternate ideas that we have for that facade. Or does this match more, is it, what, what I hear as the Western Reserve, I also hear us struggling to verbalize as far as this is exactly what, what we know, we know, it's, it's like defining art. You know what that is, not define it, right? So I'm just curious if that's, you know, possibly an option to help get us past this.
Well, I would say, I think you summarized it great where we're at right now. And I would say as part of this preliminary submission, coming back with multiple options is probably not part of what we're prepared to do. But that's required as part of final site plan approval. And so, yes, we'll be showing that.
And you, I, I don't think you have to wait until the final site plan. In fact, I say not to wait, but if, if there's some options that you come up with or ideas, thoughts like that. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the chairman.
Say goodbye. I mean, there's, there's, there have been plenty of folks that have come up with, hey, we want to bounce this off of you before we come in for the final site plan. So that we're wiretapped, we're ready to go, because they don't want to wait to have that final site plan and then it gets kicked back and then it gets approved a month later. Yeah. So, and it, it can definitely be a collaborative process if that's what you guys are open to.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Going back to the amphitheater, it's a little bit of the elephant in the room here, because we've all, you know, glanced at it and said, well, that just doesn't seem to fit. And then waltzed right on past it. Again, I think that's very ambitious. I personally think that's a good draw to the downtown area there. I don't know what kind of leeway we have, given we're not a hundred percent certain, you know, it seems like, is that an accessory use? Is it really just part of the outdoor space? Ms. Crew, I think you said something a little bit ago that just caught me a little off guard. I thought that was a great idea. Like, is there a way that we can do something there and put conditions around it? You know, in, in terms of wanting to avoid the noise and such, you know, certainly the gentleman in the back here doesn't want to be up until midnight listening to, you know, even a quartet play. I think that's something that, that we ought to consider again. This is, in my opinion, a precedent setter to what's the reshaping of this downtown area. And so I prefer that, that, that we get it right here and set a good precedence going forward. The design I saw up there is beautiful, although maybe the facade doesn't quite fit. But the buildings, you know, the backs of the buildings, you can go and back. I think this is fantastic for, for the downtown area. So it's my two cents.
Thank you. So are we, I mean, are we waiting on anything or are we? I, I'm, I'm still waiting for someone to make some sort of motion. So I, I would, I would. I think it's, it's important to also mention that whatever we approve or don't approve tonight, doesn't mean that it's final by any means. And, and I think that's, that's really important for everyone in the room to, to understand. If we approve it now, then it could look dramatically different when it's constructed. If we don't approve it today, that doesn't mean the project goes away. It means we go back to the drawing board, we come back with a solution that, that works. Ultimately, I, I look at this and I think it's something that I'm willing to say, yeah, hey, let's, let's go ahead and vote on approval. But scratch, not scratch the amphitheater, but put a big question mark over the amphitheater. Because that's something that we're, I mean, we're clearly divided as a board as to, all right, is this an accessory structure? Is it outdoor entertainment? Is it something I like, but it's not permitted? Is it something I dislike? And, you know, I, I think we all kind of run the gamut on that. And, and I actually, on, on that point, I don't know that we can make that determination. I think that what will happen more likely than not is that it's illegal and get legal's opinion on this. Because the uses are what the uses are and that's what we have to follow then. So we don't get to interpret our uses. Correct, but I think we, we would ultimately be the ones that can determine whether or not it's accessory or if it is an actual standalone item. Under what? So let's, let, let me give you a different example. Let's say there's an existing building, right? And they're changing uses. That doesn't come to us for a change of use. So if the use is questionable, we don't get to make that determination. The BZA might get to make a determination, it's a similar use. But outside of that, it is, that, that's where I was going with the initial comments about, you know, what are these uses is really determine whether it's a permitted use or conditional use is actually initially determined by zoning inspector Wilson. In consultation with legal, and they're the ones who have to make the determination as to whether something is a permitted use or an additional use, not us.
So did that happen? Did Inspector Wilson consult with prosecutor's office on determination of the amphitheater? Is that what you just said?
Have I controlled them? No. I didn't know it was a problem. In some ways, all of these uses are still in here, because they haven't, they, they don't have the actual informations to what's going into twenty spaces. Is that correct? So right now they're building buildings. So they have to fill the uses and try and uses before it can go into that building has to meet our zoning code. And that's true, any building that's built anywhere in any of our business districts, a building can be opened without any uses necessarily. And then those uses get filled in. And then it's up to Inspector Wilson to evaluate whether it's a you permitted use, a conditional use or not allowed. Finally, Mr. Merzler. Yeah.
And the owner of this project is not here?
No.
So who speaks on his behalf? Nate, well, Nate just told us he can't do anything because he needs the owner's consent.
Anyone from AODK Architecture, as well as our other members here.
Has legal representation authorized to speak on his behalf.
And we notified zoning via email for this meeting prior to.
No, I just, because I'm, I'm still stuck on that, that the architecturals. And I, and you indicated that you didn't think you would change, you'd consider it, but you didn't think you would change. That's what I heard. And so I'm really stuck on that.
Sure.
If, and if the owner was, if I knew they, whether it's preliminary.
But the preliminary site plan doesn't even evaluate for values for elevations and for subdivisions for any of that. We don't evaluate that on my site plan. That's why I'm asking, where, where are you deriving?
The architectural?
No, no.
That's where I'm at.
I understand that. I'm asking for the preliminary site. Preliminary site plan, there's only three things that we're looking at. We're only looking at a limited number and elevation is not one of those things is gonna mask. That's what I'm trying to say.
I understand what you're saying. I just, I just feel if you move it further forward, we're not gonna be able to come back.
Look, there, there are many things tonight that we discussed that actually are not part of the site plan. Because what I want to do is have an initial conversation. You start a dialogue. Because what I want to do is have an initial conversation. If you start a dialogue with you, start prepping this conversation so that you have plenty of time to go back and, and review things and consider that, and to take that and put it all into a whole. Elevation is one of those, you know, we briefly mentioned landscaping. Landscaping is not at all relevant to today. Many of these things, they're just not relevant to what we're supposed to be looking at the primary site plan. But again, I think this is a collaboration, collaborative approach. This is our first opportunity to really engage with you. And so that's why we sort of ran this meeting the way it did, but at the end of the day, the preliminary site plan is very limited scope in terms of what we review and even what they had to submit. They could have removed those elevations altogether from their submitted. They're not required to have them as part of the primary site.
And we hope that that kind of being proactive and transparent is reflective of, you know, what the owner is trying to accomplish with this project, you know, even the trustees meeting back in April at which we presented. You know, that wasn't anything that was required, but the owner wanted to make sure the community was aware of what was happening and all that, you know, was out there and became public record at that point.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, Brian Pendos, because I haven't introduced myself on the record yet. I'm legal counsel to, to the Gaffney family and their projects. As Nate said, Mr. Gaffney has, you know, we came here to a trustees meeting in April and said he wants to be a good neighbor. He's interested in investing in the community. That's why he's doing this. And that he wants feedback from the community. We've been listening. There's, there's a website out there. Feedback has been very positive to those who have reviewed some of these same designs on the website. And, and so I just comment as a matter of fairness, though. And I appreciate Chairman Fisher's point, you know, we were here, I believe, on a limited purpose of approval of a preliminary site plan, and they're, they're very limited boxes that we're checking here tonight for whether or not that's approved. You know, some, it, we're, we're in a little bit of a precarious situation, is open as we are to, to receiving feedback because there aren't any architectural design requirements. So we, we're operating a little bit respectfully inside of a vacuum and being the precedential case to bring forward some kind of idea. And so, you know, a lot of, a lot of this language, I'm the lawyer here, so I'm going to say, I'll be the bad guy. You know, a lot of this, a lot of this language that we're talking about, whether it's harmonious to adjacent properties, you know, in, in, in historic, all these terms, these are very ambiguous terms that we're, we're trying to operate in good faith and hear your concerns, but with no real specification or requirements. So asking for a little bit of grace. You know, and I can't speak for Mr. Gaffney and make a commitment that, yeah, we're going to absolutely change a facade or change a project, but again, he's a 30-year resident of Hinkley. And he's doing this because he wants Hinkley to be a better place for all of its residents to commune together. So that's why we're here, but we're hoping to have the preliminary site plan approved, obviously. And then as Chairman Fisher has said, the conversation continues. And we have to ultimately come back here with a final site plan to meet your specifications and requirements. So, thank you. Sorry to need to jump in.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
You know, one thing that I've completely overlooked since we've been talking about this is that it actually says potential amphitheater, which it's not even included. So just the same way, it's a potential town green. So high likelihood that there will be changes between now and when we see the final site review.
But you think, I actually, you finished the thought for me too, because I think there is a little hanging, hanging up on the amphitheater. Now, that is not the primary use or purpose of what we're trying to do here, you know, we're in trying to create this sense of community. We've talked about the walking paths, we've talked about the amphitheater. These are all ideas to how to best use that space. Obviously, nothing etched in stone, in stone, I think. I think the Gaffneys are excited about that. I think some of you are excited about that potential. Some aren't. But you're right. I think that's more of an add-on than, than the focal point of what we're trying to do here.
Frankly, it's not a moneymaker.
So not at all.
It's not worth the investment if it's going to anger people.
Right.
That's how business works.
Mr. Marzolo, would you like to, I thought you started with me.
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would move to approve the preliminary site plan. As, as proposed, I mean, yeah, yeah, submitted. I, I, I don't see anything in particular that stands out as certainly violating anything on the preliminary site plan checklist.
Great.
A second.
Roll on this one. Fisher, yes, crew.
Yes.
Marzolo?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
The primary site plan has been approved as submitted. Thank you, gentlemen. With that said, it is already eight thirty-six. I think we've had a pretty grueling period. So I'd suggest that we table any of the old business as well as the new business for our next meeting. Doesn't sound like the end's supposed to, so we'll go with it. The next regular zoning commission meeting is August third, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. We received and Suzanne will forward to you a request for comment for Country Brook Code from, from Planning Services. I'll quickly just show you the proposal. So if you remember, Country Brook Estates has had an interesting pathway here. So Country Brook Estates is a parcel that is sixty acres and it connects, oh, not sharing screen. It's a parcel that is across from Arborcrest. And if you remember, they've done several different proposals, the subdivisions there. The last thing that happened was ODOT denied them the ability to access it from three oh three. So what they did then is they subdivided the lot into two lots. The forty acres being one lot coming directly off of three oh three, and then they created this giant flag lot, which is, I, I'm still somewhat perplexed by. That flag lot has a very small access from Center Road, and then it comes all the way down to Country Brook Drive. And it, and there is that stub road that was built on Country Brook Drive. So the current proposal for that parcel, which I think is about twenty acres of the, of the parcel, is to just put in a cul-de-sac there. They're not subdividing that lot yet. They're just putting in a cul-de-sac. So that will appear before the Planning Commission at their July meeting. So they're requesting comments. It will be their August meeting, I think.
Correct.
Because there's requests and comments by the twelfth, so it'll be their August meeting, but they will decide what to do with that. So as I said, Suzanne will forward that to you. If you have any comments, please just get them to Suzanne by the tenth or eleventh, and that way I have time to prepare comments for submitting to the Planning Commission, I think. The other item that I want to correct is, at our last meeting, we talked about the subdivision standards and the township had increased the road width. But we had said that they increased it from twenty-two to twenty-four. They actually increased it from twenty to twenty-two. So the can I correct, the Skyland development, the roads are twenty feet wide, and now they have to be twenty-two feet.
You mentioned twenty-four on the last project.
That, that's for this access, and I was wondering what that with was.
Okay.
But that's, this is not a public road, the one
Okay.
primary site plan that we just reviewed has no public roads on it. So that's all that I have. Ms. Crew, any, anything? Mr. Marzolo?
So just to go back now, are they going to be expanding the roads in Skyland?
No, 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 it's for future developments as part of subdivision standards. So when a subdivision is proposed and they have to build their roads, they have to meet Hinkley Township subdivision standards in addition to Medina County subdivision standards for roads. And so they have to be twenty-two feet moving forward and with.
And we're still planning on moving forward with a fifty-foot setback.
Four houses, yeah, front yard setback, correct. Front yard setback fifty, ten foot rear setback. I just wanted to correct that statement because it, it changes a little bit of the geography calculation.
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Marley?
No.
Miss Engelmann?
Nope. But incidentally, I do, would it be possible to submit to or legal to ask them, would they consider this maybe amphitheater or how, how, you know, it's being an accessory building? And once it's an accessory building, does that mean it's outdoor recreation? I mean, or?
That's the thing, it's.
I mean, these are two separate items.
It's, it's not that the building is, isn't the problem. It's the use of the building that would be the problem. So what we have to find out is whether the use is a permitted use or a conditional use.
Well, I think it's open to questions because we don't.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, but that's the question. It's not the, the building. It is the use of the building.
And it's former BZA, say, wait a minute, they didn't make it clear, so therefore.
Right.
So I. Yeah, we're, we're going to research that and try to get a definition for an amphitheater and a definition for outdoor recreation.
Thank you, thank you. We probably don't need it for a couple of months, six weeks. Appreciate it.
So normal course recently has seemed to be that we do preliminary site plans. And then it's, the, the project seemed to stall for quite some time before we see anything else. That, that's happened with the subdivision up on Stony Hill, that subdivision, they've started grading now. We still haven't had a final site plan for them. But they have some time, I think, that the final site plan, the primary site plan expires two years after it was approved. So they're given a two-year window to submit for final.
What bothers me about that, if I might, is situation where they make a change that we're not happy with. And it ends up in court, and I've seen judges in situations, they went, it's already under construction, just leave it alone. You know, work with them. But, you know, is that, is that, we could get into one of those situations if this takes that kind of time. I mean, leveling the property or getting the property ready, I have no issue. But once they start putting on buildings, I'd sure like to have a be at least working on the final.
Well, they can't put up any buildings until we approve the final site plan, correct? Right, so they, I, I don't think that they, they can't even start road construction actually putting in the pavement until final site plan.
Okay, well, I thought I got the impression they could start some of this stuff.
They, they are doing the grading.
Okay, that I understand.
They're not actually doing any of the.
But there's no physical structure of a building, even the road doesn't bottom in this, not just.
Correct. Because any of that would require a zoning permit to be issued, and the zoning permit can't be issued until a final, final site remain is final. So that's the chain of events that takes place that inhibits them from doing some of this prior to final site plan. Miss Engelmann?
And you already went to me, but.
Oh, sorry.
It's still no.
It went back to Manley and then I didn't.
Right, right.
Thank you. Um. Trustee Augustine?
I have two things. The first thing is if this board feels at any point time with the magnitude of this project that they would like to have some type of a consultant, I will certainly ask the trustees on your behalf. That's up to you to determine. The second thing is, and just my memory is not recalling, do we need to, and when I say we, you, the zoning commission, need to make a motion to send a preliminary plan to the Medina County Planning Commission? Or is that just an automatic?
My understanding.
I think it's.
Okay. As soon as I, I think so. I don't remember just.
I just wanted to make sure we were.
I remember the time there.
Tucking our eyes and crossing our teeth.
The only motions that we forward to the Planning Commission are text amendments.
Got it. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other, Inspector Wilson? Yes. No, members of the public? Nothing. Perfect. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight forty-four PM.
So moved.
Moved by Marzolo.
Second.
Second by Engelmann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The meeting is adjourned at eight forty-four.